Yeah. It being seven o'clock today is January 4th, 2022. This is the regularly scheduled planning board meeting for the for the Arundel Planning Board. We are doing it remotely through Zoom. And let's see, who do we have present? I'm here, Rich Kanong, Paul Green is here, Susan Roth is here, Tom McGinn is here, Susan Senate is here, and James Lowery is here. Marty Kane is not available. He can't get his internet to work, so he has no connection. On the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes for the sidewalk for November 20th. We have a space for public comment. We have two pending applications, one of which is being tabled, the Irving Road subdivision. They have not provided us with with all of the information that we need at this point, so we're just going to table them until they get it into us. The other one is an application from Muldoon subdivision, a subdivision final plan. We have to declare the plan to be complete and move to a public hearing. Then we have the town planners report. We'll have some discussion regarding hazardous trees in Oak Ridge, and then we'll be all done and we'll go home. Well, I don't know how far. I mean, I'm gonna walk about fifteen steps into the living room and sit back in my my barrow lounger.
I'll move move to approve that agenda.
Second, motion was made by Tom McGinn, seconded by Paul Green. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Susan? You muted, Susan.
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
It is unanimous. We'll move to the the minutes for November 20th. This was the sidewalk on Lombard Road.
I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Okay, motion been made by Paul to accept as written. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? Paul? Jamie?
Aye.
Susan Senate?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
It is unanimous, and with one abstention.
I had to say, I wasn't present.
Okay. Muldoon subdivision subdivision final plan. This is for John and Susan Muldoon. They're proposing to subdivide tax map thirty-two lot twelve, eleven point two six acres on Lombard Road into three lots. John and Susan Muldoon are the owner applicants, and Norman Chamberlain, P E of Walsh Engineering, is the applicant's agent.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have two other folks on the Zoom meeting here, and you inadvertently skipped over public comment.
Thank you very much. Jerry or Doug, do you have any comments that you would like to make concerning items that are not on the agenda?
No, this is Doug Martin. I'm in this letter and just curious about the the whole procedure here.
Okay. Jerry, do you have anything to say? I'm going to assume no, because he has not unmuted himself. So, back into Norm Chamberlain.
Hi, good evening. I want to thank you for having this Zoom meeting. It saves me an hour of travel afterwards, so that's very nice. So I don't know if we want to look at the plan. We have revised the subdivision based on input from the planning board at the November sixteenth meeting to include a private way.
Okay, yeah.
Norm, can you share that with Rich? Can he share it with all of us? I have it on my phone, but...
Yeah, it'd be nice to see it. So I need to, I'm not able to share right now. I don't know who's in charge.
Rich is.
Don't rich.
I'm never in charge, Norm. Come on.
Sure you are.
You should be. You should be able to share now, Norm.
Uh, where did it go? Okay, here we go. Note says, host disabled participant should screen sharing.
I just turned it on.
You turned on your sharing. You didn't turn on share with other people.
Yeah, there's a little triangle next to share a screen that says, I think, allow others.
All I have to do is get back to where it was.
Push escape.
Up at the top, you can stop sharing. It looks like Voyager.
Yeah, it's cool.
Yes.
Very top of your screen, it's you have to push stop share first, very, very top of the actual.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so share screen. Click this.
And then near share screen at the bottom, the green arrow, it'll have a drop up. It'll say allow others to share.
There we go.
There you go, okay.
All right, get the right one here. You seeing that?
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so originally, we had proposed this as an estate lot subdivision, so there was no road. The board encouraged us at the meeting on November sixteenth to look at the private way. What we have done is we have put a fifty-foot right-of-way here. We also have a fifty-foot strip of land alongside that road that remains with lot three. So there's, there is no other access to this private way other than the the three lots in the subdivision. We have designed a swale and a level spreader that's down here near the bottom, south end of the site, near the Brook. To handle the stormwater, we've submitted a drainage report to the town that shows that we do not have any stormwater increases for the design storms to ten and twenty-five. And what else have I got here? I did get approval from the fire department for the truck turning. We sent him this exhibit earlier today, and our fancy software shows that they can drive into the hammerhead at the end, back up, and leave the site without leaving the road. We got also got some road maintenance agreement from the applicant today. It, we can submit that for review by staff, I would hope. It's it's a really simple agreement. It just shares maintenance of the road and the associated stormwater swale and level spreader that drains their road. Applicant has submitted a street name request to the town. They're looking to call this Pine Hole Lane. We haven't heard if that name is available. They also had a couple other choices. And that, that is it. This is a very simple subdivision, very large slot, so the three acres. So I'll entertain any questions.
Just to note, Mr. Chairman, Norm did mention that the fire department had approved the turnaround. You should have received a copy of that memo this evening. We just got the memo back from the chief mid-afternoon, so you should have that in your packet or available to you tonight.
Right, I I think I have it. Did Ann send it?
Yes.
I think I have it.
Yeah. Yeah, it was in the latest email Ann sent us.
Norm, are there any notes within the subdivision plan that would prevent, I presume it's lot three, the the rear lot, from getting access other than off of the private road?
Uh, we do not, but we we could add that if if that's a concern. I mean, they'd have to, they'd have to go down through this Oh, yeah. Fairly fairly heavily wooded strip of land to create a driveway driveway in between two others, so.
Understood, but I just, I would from a, just from a basic purpose on the subdivision, if for anybody buying that, they would know that they're restricted to that.
Uh, I I might, I might suggest that if it doesn't have any note at all regarding that, that it indicate that note that lot one also can only take access off from the common drive, so they're not thinking they could come off Lombard or off that other private way.
Yeah, you can do that. We will just say all lots must access the private way.
Yes.
I'm glad to see that the stand of trees is still there, because I know that issue came up at the sidewalk a little bit.
Yeah, we actually went out and located those trees, so that tree line along that side of the property is is field located. It's kind of how we came up with the fifty-foot in between the right-of-way and the neighboring property to the to the west.
Yeah, thank you guys very much for maintaining that.
Is is the private way going to be paved or gravel?
It is going to be gravel.
Okay.
How does that get plowed, Norm, in the winter? Is it going to be okay?
It's up to the homeowners association to maintain it and keep it that way. That's the way it was on where I live. It's gravel is just gravel, and it's pounded down and plowed and plowed. And then the the people on it have to maintain the the levelness and
That's right.
and packing it back down. It's their responsibility.
I live on a gravel private way, you know, have for years, and it does, it takes a little maintenance, a little TLC in the spring, but, you know. I have never, never once, knock on wood, not been able to make it into my house or out of my house.
Will there be any kind of road maintenance agreement?
There is, yes.
Yeah, he stated that.
Oh, I I I didn't see it in the packet. That's why I was wondering.
I just got it today. It's right here. So we added to note or item three here that includes stormwater drainage, ditches, culvert, swales, and level spreader.
I'll have an opportunity to review it.
Yeah, it's really short. It's only three pages.
Can you go back just a second? I wanted to see something down just a little bit. Thank you. Doesn't seem to be anything that's not complete.
There's, there's got to be more conditions. This is only one.
Well, I think you've covered pretty much all your bases, Norm, and it's, I like the solution with the one road and maintaining the buffer. I think it's going to be a good addition to Lombard Road and Elegant as subdivisions go, so I'm pleased with what we ended up with. So.
Utility is going to be underground, Norm?
I have not said that. I I was hoping to leave that kind of ambiguous, but, I mean, what I would suggest maybe is that you allow overhead up the private way and then underground from there. Underground all the way out to lot three is going to be pretty pricey.
So where would you put the power poles, Norm? Because I like the idea as much as we can to bury the power lines, but so where?
We would just put them along the right-of-way. It's just, I I don't know exactly where the pole lines are. Poles are out here. Uh, you know, there's one right in the middle of the road, so they're gonna have to relocate that one. And then run it down the side, and then they could do whole amount to transformers and and set underground secondary or whatever he wants. I was trying not to lock them into underground the whole way, but I guess that's up to the board.
What about, I personally prefer, but are we allowed to require it? And what about the other side? Can you bring it up the other side?
Good, yes.
That the side that's closest to Lombard, to log cabin? Is there a hole there?
Close to the hole. Yeah, there, yeah, there's poles all along here. Looks like there's a couple in this area. So that it could be brought up along that line there would require an easement from CMP to do that.
I I I would suggest that if the board, two things, one is if the board wants to condition the applicant on having the utilities underground, they can do that. If you're okay with them being overhead, coming into the site, I would suggest that you require them to keep it on the side of the right-of-way closest to the home lots, so that no one gets the idea that they can clear any of that, any of that buffer that you intentionally wanted to save. Because if CMP comes in and says, this is where we're going to put our poles, they're the ones that are going to cut.
That's a good point.
So I think it's wiser to require at least to come down the side of the right-of-way where the home where the home lots are located.
But I wonder if it isn't. Is it possible to get a an easement, a shared easement with CMP going down the other side? And not having to see a a bunch of poles along your right-of-way? I mean, it kind of screws the pooch, kind of.
The only problem you'll probably see, Susan, in that respect is that CMP is going to want to have another gravel driveway. So they have access, access to those pools.
Yep, right.
Well, then I'd like to require them to put the power underground.
Yeah, I I I'm a big fan of putting it underground, sticking it up on the backside of the lots. You're going to have the issue with with CMP saying we want a gravel road. But that's a distance and a half if we if we're trying to to help them get the power in there, coming all the way back across that lot's going to cost a lot of money.
That's, that's correct.
That's why I'd rather, I'd rather see it come up the road. I would rather see it underground personally.
I would too.
How long is that driveway? It's about eight hundred feet.
Eight hundred feet.
Yes, yeah, eight or eight fifty, I think.
The only reason I ask is I'm doing that now at my place. It's nine hundred feet, and it's costing us fourteen thousand dollars for the conduit.
Yes, eight hundred feet, so. Pretty close.
It's costing how much?
The way that we were talking about having it looking within the community and then talking to the the person that was there and all sorts of things, I don't necessarily thinking having poles all the way down in a basically open field at this point until there's some trees going on is going to be conducive to what they, that the discussion was of how we wanted this to look. So it would be better moving forward. It's also better for the power lines anyway underground in the long run and the maintenance of it with all the trees and things around it that we're trying to maintain to have it be underground.
And you bring five.
No argument.
With that, too.
You know, no argument at all. Underground to me is a lot better. It's why we're spending the money to do it. I don't want poles up in front of my yard, so. But it's just a heads up. It's not cheap.
I move that we require that the power be under underground along the buffer and along the road.
So I'd craft the condition basically to say power utilities shall be underground from Lombard Road to lot three.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Motion made by Susan Roth, seconded by Susan Senate, to require the utilities to be underground up to lot three. Any discussion?
Yeah, so I, I'm I'm all in favor of underground. If I live there or if I was a developer, I'd much prefer to have it underground, both aesthetics and maintenance. However, I'm a little uncomfortable with requiring it. I don't know if if we've ever done before, not that it matters, but it is an extra cost that I'd prefer to leave up to the developer and the homeowners.
One of the things that I was thinking of with the underground utilities, that these houses are so far apart that each one is going to require a transformer. So you're going to have three transformers instead of being able to share one between a couple of units. So that's going to increase the cost. Ground-based transformers are generally quite a bit more expensive than a pole-mounted, and that's why I was thinking that, you know, going overhead down the right-of-way and then dropping down with a secondary to the house would be a reasonable solution, and the power line is going to be up against the edge of that field. If we run it down the east side of the road, it's not going to be anywhere near the trees. We're probably talking four poles. So it's, you know, not a tremendous amount.
So can I ask a question, a clarifying question? So basically, all that you would see are the poles and the wires themselves, in a sense, would be underground, moving towards the houses. It would be known.
The 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 wires would be overhead down.
Down the road, but not across the road is what it would cross to the home.
Right, so we would do, if I can draw on this here. So say we run our poles down like that. And then there'd be a pole here, they'd drop down and go into the house. So this would all be underground, that part.
The only thing that you would see basically is what's on the street. And then nothing would be going across the thing or from the view from Lombard, looking down into the actual property, except for the pole line itself.
That's correct.
Uh, I mean, I'd be more, I'd be more comfortable with that if that's because then then they could actually choose if they wanted to the true the true berry. Then they can do that on their own if that's a decision that the that you all as developer wish to do moving forward. I feel more comfortable with that than having it be the straight old-fashioned lines across the house into the house.
Okay.
I still maintain that looking down that private way to see the entire row of power poles on the side of the road that is adjacent to the houses diminishes the value of the houses that you hope to build there or the people who are going to come and buy the lot. And it was my understanding when I built my house that there was some kind of movement to make sure that new construction and power gets buried underground. And I know that I had to do it, whether or not it was forced or just highly suggested. But I think you're being, I think the builder would be or the developer would be penny wise and pound foolish not to put it underground, because people are going to look for that. This is a very old-fashioned antiquated way of doing it, and new building that hopes to sell their properties for decent amounts of money don't want to see power poles. Customers don't want to see power poles. Um, that's my personal opinion, so I would vote underground for myself, so.
Any other discussions, any comments?
Yeah, I I'll add to that, that I I think it would be foolish to bury them because of, I I think the value of each home would be, I think, would easily cover the difference in cost. I think if they were wise, I think some all those poles and and wires, I think, could take away a little bit, but having said that, I don't know if I'm requiring it.
And that's where Lee Jay, I mean, do we have anything in our ordinance that would require them to be above or below?
I don't believe we do at this time. Um, I'd have to go back and look at the ordinance, but I don't believe there is anything that requires by ordinance that they be underground.
I I thought new construction had to be underground. That was my understanding. I think it's worthwhile taking a look.
Yeah, I can do that. Um, I just need to be able to get to my, with the share screen on, I can't get to my files to look at the ordinance, but as soon as we stop sharing screen, there we go.
Anything to help, Lee Jay?
Thank you. Um, where am I? Arundel. It's going to take me a minute, sorry. Utilities fifty-two. Okay. Utilities serving lots with a street frontage of a hundred and twenty-five feet or less shall be installed underground. The board may approve overhead utilities when the applicant proposes reserve affordable housing and provides evidence the increased cost of underground utilities will raise the cost of housing beyond the targets for affordable housing in the comprehensive plan. That's all the ordinance says.
We don't meet either of those criteria, correct? We're over a hundred and twenty-five foot and.
Correct. So the board, if the board chooses to have you do underground, it would need to be a condition of the approval. Or agreed upon by you guys.
Well, right now, we have a motion on the floor to require underground utilities.
Make it a condition of approval.
Right, it has been moved and seconded. So I'm going to call the vote. Ball? No. Susan? Ross?
Which, yes, aye.
Susan Senate?
No.
Tom? Jamie?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is a tie, and unfortunately, in in this case, the motion fails because we have a tie. Thank you very much. That was a very good discussion that we had. Let's, you know, we should, we should probably look at that separately at some point. Well.
Yeah. Can I make a motion, please?
If we're talking about larger subdivisions, the ordinance actually does require sidewalks. And I know Tad and I had had discussions about the possibility of saying, well, instead of putting in sidewalks, put in underground utilities. And give us something to trade off on. Susan?
Can I make a motion that we require that they have at least the buried cross that we talked about, that the, at the very least, that the developer needs to create the lines underneath the ground to the homes?
From the, from the pole to the house.
At the least, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to require the utility. the utilities to be located underground from the, from the road to the house. Or from the pole on the private way to the house.
Yeah.
Motion was made by Susan Senate, seconded by Tom again. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, Paul?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Susan Senate?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Okay, and I, I will word that on the plan so that they, they can do underground down the right-of-way if that's what they want to do.
We're strongly urging it, we just don't want to require it.
Yeah, it's their choice.
Yeah, I'm not even sure it needs to be put on the plan because it is their choice as to how it is done.
Correct, I'm just saying it to him.
We'd have to put it on the plan.
Well, and Norm, I would, only because I feel strongly about it, but we had a tie and the board was evenly split, that you might want to suggest to your client that they consider putting it all underground.
Yeah, with it, we did not have that discussion and I didn't want to preclude overhead without him, you know, being able to-
Right. Understand.
That's understandable.
So.
Paul, you were gonna say- Yeah, if I could address Norm. Norm, I only voted against, I only voted against it because we couldn't find a hard and fast rule that I could back it up with. But I strongly agree with these guys. Underground looks so much better, and if you're building three decent houses out there, it's going to be much more attractable to the person that's buying it. You're talking maybe another five to seven thousand dollars per house to put it underground.
Yeah.
And to the chair, I think we should- I think we should discuss it, putting it as an ordinance or something that is firm and fast versus it being something to consider.
I agree.
I agree with that, too.
You know, I, I understand Paul's rationale for it. I just happen to like them underground, which is flying.
I'm putting mine underground, you know?
Well, I, I think Paul's suggestion is good. I think we should consider making it a condition of a permit.
Yep.
As long as it's not, you know, with some of the conditions that are already in the ordinances, and it, it sort of moves Rundle forward, really. And it doesn't hurt the town to do it.
No.
So.
We need, we need, are there any other questions for the applicant concerning this project?
There's, there's three requests for waivers, right?
Yes.
And I understand the timber harvesting, one, obviously, it's a field, we did the, you know, the sidewalk, but I'm not smart enough to know whether or not the other two should be waived. I guess I'm going to rely on, I follow board members here are a lot smarter than I am in that stuff. Is there any reason why we would be wavering those?
If I could jump in on that, generally, we would do high-intensity soil surveys for higher density and developments. This is, you know, three, three acre plus. So it's, it's a function of wastewater disposal. It's what the high-intensity soil survey can do for you. The same with the hydrogeologic assessment. You know, this is a very low-density development. The, the wells are not going to be impacted by your neighbor's septic system because they're so far away. That's, that's why we had asked for those. And trees, obvious.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm comfortable with those waivers, so I'll make them that approve of those waivers.
Now, second.
Yep, okay, motion was made by Tom, seconded by Jamie, to approve the waivers that have been requested. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Paul?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Susan Senate?
Aye.
Tom again?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Is there anything else? Because we, we still need to deem the application complete and then go to public hearing.
I move that we deem the application complete.
Second.
Yeah. Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by James Lowry, to deem the application complete. Any discussion? Hearing none. Susan Senate?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
It is unanimous. The application is deemed complete. The next step is for a public hearing. We can schedule that for two weeks from now, which would be January eighteenth.
We need a mo-
We need a motion to do the public hearing.
I'll, I'll move that we schedule it, public hearing, next meeting, January eighteenth.
January eighteenth, yeah.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Senate, to have a public hearing on January eighteenth. Any discussion? Hearing none. Paul?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Susan Senate?
Aye.
It is unanimous. And so we'll have the public hearing on the eighteenth, and after that, we should be set to go. We should be able to get the findings of fact out and have them all ready for you.
Sounds wonderful.
You've done a great job, Norm. One of the better applications we've seen come through.
Well, there's only three lots. If it was eighty-four lots, it'd be a little different.
Well, yeah, it probably would be.
I, I trained him for many years. I trained him for many years in Auburn.
Your, your effort per lot, Norm, was, was commendable.
Thank you.
Even, but even on three lots, we've, we've seen a couple of three lot that were just disastrous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Understood. Well, thank you very much. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
All right.
Thank you.
Good night. To save that out. Okay. Lee J?
All right, I'm actually, I actually do have two things, but the second one is not the educational information, since you folks already covered that without me. Perfect, I love it. So the first thing is just the discussion regards, regarding hazardous, hazardous trees up in Oak Ridge. I wanted to just keep you up to date on what was happening up there. It doesn't require you folks to take any action, but I thought it's a sensitive enough issue that I wanted to make sure you were aware of it, and it would have been done earlier, but I think I missed a couple of meanings here, so. So what happened was lots, between lots, six, seven, and eight, there are some very tall, skinny pine trees, and we're talking like thirty footers or higher. One of them came down on one of the houses that was under construction. And the owner of that home was very concerned that some of the other trees could come down as well. So initially, Jim Nagel and I went out and took a look at the trees and considered that there were three dead trees in one of the areas and felt those ought to come down. Because we don't want that house to be constructed and someone living in it and then have a windstorm or something that's going to bring another tree down on the house. So we, you know, and, and the, the owner wanted to bring down more of the trees. And we said, look, you know, we're, we're comfortable with the three that are dead. If you want to go further, this buffer that was created was part of the DEP approval. You're going to need to talk with the EP and see what they say. So he did that, and we received an email communication from him, from the DEP, who said that they were fine with the other trees coming down. Their purpose of the buffer was not a visual buffer, but it was for stormwater and traveling down through that area. If you're familiar with it, it kind of travels front to back and down into the gully area. They told him that those trees could come down on his side of the property, but to not to stump the ground so that he's not going to be taking the stumps out and disturbing the vegetation, the other vegetation that's there, or the soils that are there, merely stumping it. And so he's doing that, I would assume, at this point. And I just wanted to keep you abreast of that because the buffer as a stormwater buffer is not changing, but DEP concurred that more of those trees than what we agreed to was probably a real safety hazard and that they ought to come down.
So why weren't they asked to replace them? I mean, why weren't they asked to put trees back?
You got to ask DEP that. I don't know. They just, they, they were more concerned of disturbing the existing vegetation that was there was not what they wanted to see. They just, but they agreed that the trees themselves needed to come down. I didn't have a direct conversation with DEP. I told the homeowner, you know, if you want to take this further than the three that Jim and I feel are, are safety considerations, you need to talk with the EP. That's what they did. And we got a concurring email from them saying, go ahead.
So I'm not talking to you as in a butter to the, to the properties. Why aren't there more buffers being put back into that place? Why are there the houses being able to be close together without any trees between any of them? And now they're taking more trees away without replacing them? As a person who lives here and has to see it, why aren't they having to replace what's there?
Well, I wasn't part of that review and approval, as you know. So I don't know what the conversations were as a staff person. But those were not visual buffers. They were, they were for stormwater.
But there are visual buffers between homes that are not been replaced.
That, I can't tell you.
The buffers were originally designed to be visual buffers between the houses.
Right.
This, this buffer certainly wouldn't have been. Those trees were limbed and they're forty-foot trees, thirty-foot, forty-foot trees, and they're limbed all the way up.
They're limbed by them.
No, 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 no. They're, they were not, they were not limbed.
I'm thinking of a different place than what you're talking about, then, probably.
It's up at the cul-de-sac on the left-hand side.
Where the new, brand-new construction is being built, the last home up on that side?
Yes, on the, on the original road that got approval, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So anyway, I just, I wanted to, you know, keep you apprised of that, that that's what had happened and that's what, why those trees are being taken at this point. It's not like we're, we're certainly not going out there and saying, sure, clear-cut the area, you know? But he did have a safety concern. One tree already had come down on the house that was under construction, and there were three dead ones, and, and those were the three that Jim and I agreed to. He went above us and went to the DEP. So there, there's where they're at with that. The other issue that I do want to add to this is, again, another conversation. I, I think Rich is aware of it, but I've had an opportunity for several months now to work on a number of projects that needed to go through the private street approval process under the private street ordinance, which is separate from you folks directly. It's not part of the zoning. It's not part of the subdivision regulations. And I found it very onerous on both homeowners or developers and on staff. With, excuse me, whether there are streets or driveways that are already existing and needing to go through a process of hiring a surveyor, hiring an engineer, and going through a full design for a road that's already constructed. And so I have approached, I approached initially Roger and Jim and said, you know, can we, what do you think about changing this and making it a little less burdensome on people that are on existing drives or roads? That if they're constructed or seem to be constructed to the street standards already, do we have to put them through this full process? And they agreed we ought to take a look at that, and I have forwarded some wording to the select board and met with the select board about modifying that language, and they were in complete agreement that we ought to make it a less burdensome issue for those folks that live on private ways that are already constructed. There's still a process that's going to be in place that may require an engineer to certify to us that that road has been constructed to the standards of the ordinance. And there also is a section that says that an engineer may be retained by the applicant to have an engineer write a letter to us certifying that that road has been previously constructed to the town's standards. But the wording also goes on to say that the Public Works Director has the right to make that determination. That was at the request of the Select Board. So that was based on discussion we had during the workshop session, and that's the direction the Select Board wanted it to go, so.
They want to give the Public Works Director the right to, to pretend that he's an engineer?
I guess. I was hoping, I was looking at it from a different angle of not doing that, simply to keep the town staff out of a potential liability issue and require a private engineer to make that determination. But that was not the direction that I had been asked to modify the modifications to. So anyway-
My concern is that it would give, give the general public potentially the appearance of preferential treatment if a particular street is, is identified, is being able to, to be, to go public and one is not.
Right.
Valid, valid concern, Jamie. So this is going to be going back to the Select Board again for them to be able to approve from the standpoint of getting it on the warrant. So if you do have any concerns, please, you know, let your, I can certainly share that, that, those amendments with you and you know, let your Select Board members know. But my intent is, was just to, you know, have folks that are living on some of those roads not have to spend thousands of dollars in time and staff spending thousands of dollars of town time to have these public hearings and do these reviews and, and the whole bit, when we should be able to streamline that process somewhat.
That caveat, though, strongly concerns me.
Which caveat?
That the town works person has the-
Oh, Public Works. Yeah. Again, I mean, I can, I can, through, through Anne, I, I can get you that drafted wording, and certainly you can move your comments on, I would assume. I don't think I'm stirring the pot in any negative way. I'm just kind of bringing you up to speed on change that involves planning staff, so.
Has this, these decisions with some of these road requirements and details always been in the purview of the Select, Selectmen's Board? Or is it something that the Planning Board up to now has been involved in, in terms of changing language and they're shaking your head no's? I mean, it's never been in the Planning Board's purview? It's always been in the Selectmen's Court? Or vice versa?
Vice versa. The Streets and Roads Design used to be part of the Planning Board under subdivision, and about three years ago, was it, Jamie?
Yeah.
They, the Selectmen decided that they wanted to be able to control what was going on. And they, they ended up going to town meeting. They gathered together as a group. They rewrote the, that section of the ordinance. They went to town, to town meeting, and they had it taken away from the Planning Board and set up as a standalone ordinance.
Well, I think it's, I agree with Susan that, and I'm not sure if Susan was saying all of this, but maybe she was thinking it and being kindred spirits, both being Susan. I'm going to assume she was. But I think it's really important that given the nature of small towns and power structures, it's very important to have independent third parties- to have independent third parties making important decisions like this. And maybe there's some middle ground between having to hire engineers and whatnot. But I really think in order to silence any criticism about nepotism, pronism, favoritism, or whatever, that we have an independent third party be the decision maker.
Plus with the fact that they've now taken back the ability to just themselves do, accept roads, and now I'm putting it more as a more onerous way to get that, and now that final, I don't know, it concerns me that all this control is being.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want you to take away, because you used a word that makes me cringe a little bit, and I don't mean it in a bad way, Susan, but they're not accepting any roads. These are still private ways.
Right.
They have, what they had done was the review process was moved from the Planning Board to an independent ordinance separate from subdivision regulations.
I understand that. Now it's going towards the Public Works as the final say.
Yes, but as a private way, they will not be public roads.
Correct. I understand exactly what you're saying. I'm saying what happened is they take, they took it from this board. They put it into a third party, and now they're taking it as a final say back to an individual versus a board or a group or a thing, which concerns.
Selectmen, anyway, the Select Board. And I think if it's personally, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but maybe you can find a solution in your language.
I think it's our day. That.
I tried.
You know what they do to the messenger, right?
Again, my, my initial language still required an engineer to be retained by the applicant to provide that information. The, it was the Select Board urging the change to go from a shall to a may and still having the Public Works Director make that determination.
See, that's, that's the problem that I have with it. The Public Works Director should not be involved in that at all. He's a town employee. He should not be doing stuff that says, yeah, that road is okay. He has no degree and no, the fact that he's been paving roads for forty years is irrelevant. He doesn't have any credentials that say he's capable of making that decision.
Well, that's for you folks to discuss. Again, my intent at trying to do that was simply to keep town staff out of a liability situation.
Having tried to have input when they were working on the roads ordinance, when they took it away from the town, I'm not going to bother because it was a complete waste of our time to go and try to help at all in that process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were completely ignored. But that's my two cents worth, at any rate. Anything else for us, DJ?
I think I've created enough headaches for today.
Nah.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to, I just wanted to keep you up to speed on that because it does, you know, it does involve two to ten lots, and it does involve, you know, streets. So, anyway.
Can I ask a question in regard, as a public person, not as a, I'm going to question, I have a question for regard to our lovely across the street. There's been, there was supposed to be a paving of our roads to get up to code and potentially going forward. It was not done this year. I have a feeling the developer is currently going to be holding until all of the development is done because of the process that needs to occur at this point. Is there a timeline on the acceptance? Again, as a person, I was not on the board. I was just there for the, a butter for them to have to do any of this in a timely fashion, or is it just because he said he would build it to code and eventually have it double paved, that this can go on infinitum until he feels like finishing it?
So again, I don't know the ins and outs of the beginning part of the project. Usually, you don't put a final coat on a road until any or all of construction is done because you're going to have heavy trucks going in and out for that second phase in this particular case, and you don't want them to beat up that final coat.
So him telling us it would be done in October, the fact that it was not done in October, that's fine because he just said, I'm not going to do it now, I'm going to wait.
I'm not saying it's fine. Again, I have not been part of those conversations, so I don't know, you know, the details of what was said or anything. I'm assuming, assuming there's still a bond or a letter of credit in place for the final paving. So if it doesn't get done, the town can call that money in to do that work. But again, I don't, I don't know the details of that because I wasn't part of the Phase One review process.
Most of you were.
I think it would probably be a question for Keith.
It probably would be. It's my, if, I may not be remembering it correctly, but I thought he was going to put the second coat on this year. And that was going, when we initially went through the process, he hadn't even talked about Phase Two.
Correct.
He was going to do this section.
Right.
And when he was done with that section, the road was supposed to have the final, the final layer of pavement.
Yeah. Because it was supposed to go in, because the people that bought their homes also asked me, because aren't we supposed to be going for, because it ends up going to have to be another two years of us paying for things that we weren't supposed to be paying for at this point if it was ever to be approved by the town. So I'm just curious if there's a timeline for, as a person, again, not fully part of the process in depth as I am now, as a person who lives here, I was just curious, because many of you were on the board, if that was a conditional thing, or just, it could just keep flying on until he feels like finishing it.
I don't. Sorry, can I?
No, I was going to say, it got delayed in terms of the second coat for the pavement because he came and asked about putting in twenty more houses in Phase Two and connecting through it and having the entire thing run all the way up from there. That was the, that's the last that I remember about talking about the road.
I can check the whole file and see if there's a bond or a letter of credit in place on that and see if there's any language that specifically said when that needed to be completed.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious, as a person who's here, that's now, it's obviously gone past that, and we were told as a road that it would be done in October. And granted, October's weather was kind of gross. It was rainy towards the very end. I mean, it was really kind of not pleasant, but it was not done. And so I was just curious, and also construction-wise, you know, the, having a coat that's kind of a base coat and then waiting two or three years to put a second coat, does it make a difference on the quality of the road and all that stuff? I was just curious.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to do some research on that.
Thank you.
Tom, you were going to say something?
No, I just, I don't recall the dates, but it was the first phase, it did have requirement to have a final code, of course.
And it's not.
It's not. Now, I don't know, I know there was a discussion about him delaying it, but I don't know if we ever put it into, into the note or into language of approval.
I don't remember.
But it's a matter of enforcement. It's an enforcement issue. That's, unless there's something saying otherwise that they could delay it, I think we default back to the requirement that it should have been paved by now.
So we're kind of going down a road of a project that we really shouldn't talk too much about, but I will do some research to find out.
My question as an butter person is to you to research that.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. I'll put my hat back on as a person. I'm just saying as a butter, I had a question. Thank you.
You want to throw any more hand grenades in here?
No.
I move that we leave, that we.
It's not a motion to leave, it's a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to go.
Now, we're doing Zoom now, it's leave. The button right down on the lower right says leave.
That's right.
That's what I'm saying. That's why, that's why I said adjourn, leave.
Don't anybody tell Paul it was left.
I think he's already gone.
Guys, have a good week.
Happy New Year. I didn't say that.
Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks, Rich.
Take care.
Yeah.
Okay, good night.